Good evening all, we'll begin the Bolt Saber Planning Commission and Housing Task Force meeting Wednesday, February 5th, 7:00 PM. I'll have the roll call, Nick Preost here, Doug McCracken, he's on lock. Paul Kay is here, Kathleen Sugland is online, Michael Bender is here, Megan is online. And Jay, and then Dennis. Well, everybody, everybody. All right. We'll do the minutes. And I have a motion for the minutes, approve the minutes.
Make the motion.
Thank you, can I get a second? Thank you, any discussion? Any corrections? During that, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Doug McCracken abstaining. New business, application to amend the zoning map, I'm gonna turn it over to Ed Casella.
Great. Hey, good evening, everybody, Ed Casella. Representing Rudo Properties in a planning commission referral for a potential map change amendment to properties that are on the north side of Middlesex Turnpike, right north of Route 9 interchange. I put together a little memo for you, just to kind of articulate a little bit what we're doing and why. Some reasons why we think it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, so. I don't know. How familiar everybody is, but the town's zoning code is broken up into a number of commercial districts. Main Street's the B1 district. The area near Spencer Plains, and the area is like the B4, they call it the Gateway District. And then the main part of Route 1 is the B2 Shopping Center District, like where Stop &amp; Shop is. Kind of along that stretch of Route 1, or so where Staples is, that's all B2 Shopping Center District. So, and there's obviously a lot of different areas, but when you go out to the intersection of Middlesex Turnpike and Route 9, there's a little patch of B2 there. And, and I ran into it when I represented Yale and doing their expansion a few years ago, because B2 district has a cap on the size of building. And unless you have a certain number of square feet, your cap debt, I'm doing this all the time, I had 20,000 square feet or 25,000 square feet. And Yale wanted to expand, and we went to the zoning commission and got a an expansion, if you had more than five acres, you could go to 30,000 square feet, 35 or something like that. But it was interesting, because at that meeting with the zoning commission, members of the commission kind of looked at it and said, why is there B2 Shopping Center District out surrounding Route 9 on Middlesex Turnpike? And one of the things they did was they read the purpose. And that's why I provided it to you, because if you look at the purpose of the B2 Shopping Center District, it's to sustain and enhance the central shopping center areas consisting of anchor retail shopping with small attached complementary stores, combined parking, tailored toward individuals. What does that have to do with what's out on Middlesex Turnpike and Route 9? And the chairman actually voted against it, and he said, what you really need to do is change the zone. And B4, the gateway, which is meant to be kind of the gateways into town, is more appropriate. So, a few weeks ago, when we were contacted, I was contacted by Anthony Rudo, we went back to the zoning commission and said, all right, you know, there's properties that are north of Route 9 that are undeveloped. And they're good commercial properties with good soils, and they're available. And nothing's happening on them. And part of the reason probably is because they're mis-zoned. So, we went and talked about potential options, and you know, we could create uses that are available in the B2 shopping district that you don't necessarily want in town, right, near where Stop &amp; Shop is, but maybe out in outer line areas, or we could change the map. And so, it was kind of a resounding, like, we think changing the map is better. So, what we, what we decided to do is what this application is, is just focus on what's north of Route 9, on Middlesex Turnpike. And look to rezone in a couple of different ways the properties that are up there. So, sorry, my computer's not working, but you can kind of see the map here, north of Route 9. On the, on the left-hand side, there's one vacant parcel, which is the Triangle Parcel, 7-11, convert that to B4. And then the other parcels are all residentially used, for the most part. Residential properties are not allowed in the B4, or the B2, for that matter, so they're non-conforming. But they are allowed in the B3 district. Which is meant to be kind of a transition between commercial districts and residential districts, where it allows both small-scale commercial and residential. So, those properties would be converted to B3, which is in line with how they're used now. Across the street, you have three different areas of properties. The first is across the street, 756 Middlesex Turnpike is the big piece, that's Allen Halls, BNL Construction. Operate, a part of it, is, is, is operation is much bigger than this parcel, but it's part of it. And then you also have La Maria Restaurant. And I forget what else is over there, I think it's residences and the BFW. All right, and then, in the middle here, you have vacant, vacant land. One piece is, one piece is developed with the historic house. I think it's the oldest house in Saybrook, and then, and then a kind of a mixed, mixed use. Great, and then the other two pieces are vacant, and then across the street, across VFW Highway, you have a few other, I believe these are all vacant pieces of land. That's all zone B2 right now. And nothing's happening, so the proposal here is to convert all of this to B4. And I gave you on here also, you know, some uses that are allowed in the B4 that aren't allowed in the B2. And there's one caveat to one of these, but research labs, manufacturing, processing, assembly of goods. Kind of like light industrial, so to speak. That's not allowed in the B2, except for super-small scale operations that have manufacturer processing or assembly of goods for sale on property at retail, when you have three people working on it, maximum of three. So you could have like a store or something where they're actually making something in the back, max three employees. So not like any other type of research facility or manufacturing is not allowed. You know, kind of painting, plumbing, electrical shops, woodworking, blacksmith shops, those kind of things. Marine vehicle establishments, which are establishments for the sale, repair, manufacturing, servicing, storage of boats, personal watercraft, marine trailers, that's not allowed in the B2, but it's allowed in the B4. And then warehousing, wholesale, building contractor business, storage yard. Those types of uses are not allowed in the B 2, but they are allowed in the B4. So, you know, the way I look at this from a plan of conservation and development perspective, is here are parcels that are I think appropriate for commercial development. They're adjacent to Route 9, they're sandwiched in between other state highways. And they provide, like we talked about, that transition from more commercialized, as you go north on Middlesex Turnpike, it becomes more residential. But they're underutilized, and I think part of the reason they're underutilized is because they don't have the right zoning, so they don't have the, the right property developers and end-users don't have the right ability to put things there. Because it's, it's not really a good spot for retail. It's not necessarily a good spot for office, you know, those want to be more in the central shopping areas of town. So, that's why we're asking for a map change. Converting a lot of the properties from B2 to B4. But then also taking some of the residentially-used properties on the, on the west side of Middlesex Turnpike, converting those to B3, which is more appropriate with how they're, how they're used. From a consistency with the plan of conservation and development perspective, I'll give you a few things that I believe apply, you know, again, this is, these are opportunities for businesses like Anthony's to be able to stay in town. To, to develop a, a property where other businesses can come. That include things like bioscience, manufacturing, robotics, those are not allowed there now, they wouldn't be allowed on the property. Attract new businesses compatible with existing industry base. Gives us just kind of more commercial space that's available, that isn't right in the middle of town. And obviously retain and grow successful local businesses that provide quality long-term employment. So, this is, I think, a good opportunity for us to kind of strengthen this commercial area of town, this little isolated commercial area of town. With this map change.
I think also it makes some non-conforming conformant, correct? And it cleans it all up, I think that's why they wanted us to change the, all the maps, to such a cluster.
This Allen Hall's property really isn't allowed there, right? Under the B2, so.
Neither are the residences?
Right, so that comes it up, okay. Any other comments from the guests in the audience?
We're residents there, and we'd be happy to be able to do conforming.
And Nate?
Webb, we're the.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone online? Does Crystal or Deidra have any comments? Any questions from the commission?
I mean, I think, I've always thought that sort of B2 is kind of weird, excuse me, having that out there. I'm just sort of wondering, just given like what's around it, it's like sandwiched in between two different B3s, like why, why the B4 and not B3, given that there's a lot more residential map, whereas B4 is, I think, a much more intensive commercial use.
Yeah, I, I think B3 is pretty limited as well, so I'm not sure you're gonna find businesses, B3 is basically a little step down from B2. So you can do a lot of things in B2, just at a smaller scale. So if those aren't happening now, I don't think they would happen under B3. Because it's, it's geared toward kind of retail and office-type uses. So this just opens up opportunities for, you know.
And if.
Different types of larger.
If a provision of any affordable housing would be allowed in this area.
Either way.
Either way.
Whether it's B2 or B4, housing would be allowed. So that doesn't change that capability.
Would that have to be an 830G? Right now, B4 doesn't allow housing, it would have to be 830G.
Either way, B2 prohibits housing as well, so does B3.
Right. I think B1 is the only one that allows it.
And B4.
Yeah, yeah, dwellings are prohibited in all those, except for B1, and, and single families are allowed in B3. So.
Can we move it from 2 to 4, does it make it easier to build more apartments?
It's the same.
Right now.
It's literally, it's literally the exact same. Those properties are all, would all still be available for development. I do have an 830G coming right up the street on Middlesex Turnpike. Twelve more, you told them units. So, about to be submitted. Just on the other side of Ocean Side.
Any other questions, comments?
Nick, we, we did get a request from Bruce Carlson. And perhaps we just address that, that discussion.
Okay.
I guess I just wanted to acknowledge, we received his input and you know, and his concern was, should this be, take more into consideration, the affordable housing aspect? But I think we just heard the discussion, we're not ruling that out, with this change.
Because affordable housing is allowed in the B3 and B4.
I think one point he did make, that's probably not in the scope of the discussion today though, is should some of our zoning rules make it easier just to build housing without requiring an 830G? Which is a totally different topic.
Yeah, guys can talk about that too.
That's, yeah. Yeah, that was one of the points I got out of his mail there, so.
Yeah.
Moving from 2 to 4 doesn't make anything any easier or worse than it is today.
Yeah.
But as we're talking about wanting to improve more housing, is there more we can do to actually make it easier? But we're not.
That's not what we're discussing.
No, and we're also not changing any real residential zones correctly. Tonight, they're already business.
Exactly.
So, single-family dwellings aren't necessarily allowed there, eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Hearing no objections, I'd like to make a motion that we we have to comment the zoning. That we are in agreement with this change, and it is in line with the plan of conservation and development, and it's I'll pass it over to Eric, it's page 67. It's really strengths in the town's business section, the overall policy. Is there any discussion on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Me opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Part of the meeting you've all been waiting for, Tom McWhitty is gonna talk to us about zoning codes.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Tom.
If I may.
Yes.
I thought you had said housing was not permitted in B2, B4, but then you said that an 830G allows housing in B4, is that because it?
Because of, yes, because of the legislation around 830G, it is allowed in these zones.
In particularly B3 and B4.
Like basically allows them everywhere.
Exactly, except in industrial is the exception, yeah.
Oh, any business area.
Any, any area.
Any area, yeah.
So, not only B2 also.
B2?
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Education.
All right. All right, very one that doesn't know me, I'm Tom McWhitty, I'm the building official here in town. Been here for almost eight years, can't believe that I have. So, a couple of things we can start out with, it is mixed-use residential and business. There are, in multiple locations, that this happens in town, there are some issues with it when you're trying to retrofit this sort of thing. There's always the fire separation between the units, between the business units and the residential units, that can be problematic. Fire alarm systems, you know, requiring fire alarm systems that are interconnected between the residential and businesses, so that people upstairs know to get out if the business is on fire. Egress condition, you know, hallway sizes, bedroom windows have to be changed, door sizes, doors require closers. Especially in older buildings, the hallways are not always set up for egress. It was like emergency lights, exit lights, all those things have to be installed. Get people out in an emergency, and then of course, there's septic capacity. A lot of buildings were built to have offices on the second floor. The office used for a septic is a fraction of what a home would be, no one's taking showers. There's not multiple people in there per day taking showers, flushing toilets. So the capacity is much greater for a housing unit than it is for an office. So we've got some examples here on Main Street where offices were changed into apartments. 100 Main Street, this is where Mike's barber shop is, it's an older building. On the second floor were business offices that had been vacant for quite some time. A lot of it was due to COVID. And then the owner decided, no one was going back to the office, let's make them into apartments. And that particular case was, it was set up very nicely for apartments, there was stairway in the front, a stairway in the back. Both had the correct dimensions to get out, both had egress doors. He had to add some emergency lights and things like that, but the egress was already there. We installed alarms from the downstairs to the upstairs that rang in the apartments, if something happened down in the barber shop or the other store that was next door. He ended up doing two, two one-bedroom apartments, they're very, they're good-sized apartments. Yeah, very good-sized apartments. The biggest issue with that was because it was an older building and the way it was set up, there really was no way to get the, usually a fire separation is sheetrock, it's usually five-eighths fire code, sheetrock, even one or two layers. The construction of the building and all the mechanicals that were in the way, it was almost impossible. So what we ended up working with him on was a, there already was a suspended ceiling here, drop ceiling like this. You can get a fire-rated drop ceiling. They had to change everything, it's the tees, it's the stuff that goes on the wall, the pads, everything. Which he did, he was able to change the drop ceiling in both units downstairs to get the fire rating that we're looking for. So that worked out really well. But again, there was just, no, there was so much stuff in the way, pipes, ducts, you name it, wires, there's no way you're sheetrocking the ceiling. In that case, he also, you know, he had to change some of the windows for egress in the bedrooms to get people out. And yeah, in general, I mean, it was, you know, besides the putting kitchens in and bathrooms in and stuff like that, and the money, it was pretty, pretty simple change over for, on that, on that unit. The other unit was 247 Main Street, which is the Essex Restaurant, and there are two or one-bedroom apartments above the restaurant. Same situation, that building was remodeled in the 90s, I believe. And everything was set up on the second floor, it was perfect, there were five-foot hallways, there were big wide stairwells, everything was to fire code. It already had emergency lights, it had exit signs. Again, it was, it was really good setup, had to install four bathrooms, you know, the stuff like that, the kitchens. But it really, everything existing in that place worked for that. That was kind of an unusual situation. As far as the fire separation, the restaurant, but there was a bakery there before that, I believe, there always was a fire separation to a material. I think we enhanced it a little bit in certain areas. But that was kind of really set up for us, that was the best-case scenario. Same thing with the alarms, that went from the, you know, from the restaurant, they would ring up in the two apartments. He ended up having to replace the septic, they had pretty high-tech septic in the front, most of that was driven by the restaurant, not by the apartments. But yeah, he ended up having to replace the septic there, he had plenty of room to do it. Now, most of these buildings on Main Street, they don't have the property to expand the septic. Septic is an issue on Main Street. There are some other buildings that lend themselves to doing this. But again, I'm not sure about the septic capacity we're looking for, but there are, there are buildings on Main Street that could, this could happen. So. So that's kind of the mixed-use part of this. We talked about building costs, what's driving a lot of all this? So basically, material and labor costs have gone through, they skyrocketed. Material costs went up probably 400%, and they've come down 200%, so now they're only 200% more than what we pay. So everyone's happy to do it, but it's still ridiculous, some of the items, anything petroleum-based is still high. Any of the PVC piping, the decking, all that stuff has still remained high.
Mr. McWhitty, since when, 200%?
COVID. Yeah, as soon as COVID hit, everything went up 400%.
1920, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so now it's, now it's back down. To somewhere recently. Yeah. Labor costs have dramatically increased. There's, there's a shortage of labor, there's shortage of quality labor, electricians, plumbers, HVAC techs. We're starting to see more, they're starting to push kids more towards, towards the trades. So we're starting to see that a little bit, and I think some of the younger people are seeing what people are getting paid, and like, hey, this isn't a bad thing. But I think plumber, I know he said the average, average age of a plumber in Connecticut right now is 56 years old. That's a plumber. The carpenters. That's a little different now, we have you know, a lot of, a lot of groups that have come in that are, that are doing a lot of the carpentry work, masons, sheetrock. So that, there are younger people doing that. You know, there has been an influx into that, but the, the trades, licensed trades have been difficult. Electricians and plumbers, they're getting paid, I mean, they're charging ridiculous amounts, and they're getting paid ridiculous amounts. From apprentices on.
I don't know if I should hold a question till later, I was curious to have you talk about the apprentice situation and training the trades in the state and.
Yeah, so electricians, plumbers, HVAC, you do have to apprentice under a licensed contractor for a period of time. They're all different for the different, different trades, and then you have to take tests to work your way up, like electricians or E2s and then E1s, E1 is the highest.
But don't, don't they have to go to school first?
They also have to go to school.
Do we have enough school opportunities, or should we focus on trying to establish?
So the, the electricians, I can speak for the electricians, for years have, they've all had to go to school to go up a grade. And that's all been available, it's been available forever, and they, they take advantage of it because of paying. The higher you can get it up, the more money you're gonna make. The better your license is, the more money you make. So they're, they're very, especially electricians, they, they tend to be a little brighter, the stuff they're doing is a little more technical. And they, they do the schooling, and they do move up. A lot of them want to start their own business, so you can't start your own business unless you're an E1, and it takes years to get to that point. So you can't pull a permit unless you're an E1. So it takes a long time for them to, and yes, there is plenty of schooling available. Plumbing, there is, I mean, there are trade schools for plumbing, but plumbers do not, only recently had to take any kind of continuing education. They have to take tests for their licenses, there's not necessarily schooling available, like there is for electricians.
And they keep changing the codes.
And they keep changing the codes, yes, I have trouble keeping up with codes myself.
Which is also another code, good cost.
Right.
There's also verbalized training for HVAC, correct?
Correct.
Because that's engineering.
Any licensed trade, there are, there's formal training for it, yes. All except for the person that builds your house and does the structural work, there's no training. No test to become a contractor, all you have to do is send a check into the state, and you are a building contractor. $247, you can be a contractor.
There you are.
Yeah. So, yeah, so the costs, the costs have gotten, have gotten crazy. There's a lot of talk about. There's a lot of talk about, you know, why aren't small houses being built like, like in the eighties, say? There were a lot of small capes that were built, especially in this area. Program, there's a local builder, Ralph Gomez, that had a great business. He was building small capes, he was buying large tracts of land, he was developing the land, putting these capes in. It was a, he had a, he had a very, very good business doing it. He had a great program. He was one after another. He was very organized and he was tied in with a bank. So the people were coming in, getting the mortgage, getting the house, getting everything was a package deal. He had a great program. It was worth his while to build a small house. Now, for most builders, even a spec builder, it's not worth it to build a small house. Your profit margin is so small, is so close. Any mistake, any problem wipes out your profits. It's difficult to get contractors to do it, like subcontractors do electrical plumbing HVAC. They would rather do the ten thousand square foot house where they can stay, they don't have to set up and break down, set up and break down. They stay there, they bring all their stuff there, they get it done. The percentage is, they're making ten percent on four hundred thousand instead of ten percent on forty thousand. So that's what they're, they're looking for. And same with builders. They're making a bigger percentage on each piece of the unit because of the size. You know, everything costs more, so their markup is greater, their profit is, is greater on all of that.
With that, why aren't we seeing more modular housing then? Especially for the smaller stuff.
Modular housing is very expensive.
Yeah, it's not. Is it?
It's not, it's not a bargain. No, no.
Oh, used to be.
It, no, not anymore. They're building to the same codes. It's two by six walls, well insulated, they're beautiful, they all tile. I've done three or four in town.
Okay.
And they are beautiful. They're, you never know.
You go online and try to price some of these things out, I mean, you do a prefab at, you know, two thousand square feet, it's gonna cost you six hundred thousand dollars. You still gotta do all the side work and everything else. I mean, it's almost not even worth it.
It's like custom built now.
It might be put together quicker, but you're still.
Right.
You're still paying the same amount.
And I would have thought that because they could do it in a factory at scale.
It should be that way.
It should be.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they've, they've kind of morphed into, it's almost a custom house.
Custom built now.
Yeah. You get to go on a computer and pick this, this, this and this. So they're not just pumping out one spot.
So even going to the, what are they, SIPs, the structured panels?
Right.
That's, I know that's not cheap.
Right. It's the same thing. The house on College Street that just went up was.
Looks very nice though.
Yeah, yeah.
It's tall.
Have to measure that one. Yeah. So I mean, just, just an example, I have a good friend's electrical contractor and he used to work in Cromwell a lot, doing small, these small houses and his, he would probably get paid eight thousand dollars to wire that house. He can, he can wire now a, a million dollar house for thirty thousand dollars plus, plus other things that he throws in. And it's almost the same, it's not quite the same amount of time, but same amount of effort and he's making a much bigger profit. Making more money on the materials, the lighting fixtures, everything, the switches, you know, everything. So they're, they're kind of drawn to the bigger project. That's what they really, really, really want to do. And that market for the smaller homes, the simple stuff is really is, I, I don't see it here at all. I'm sure it exists, but not in this area. The price of land is too high too.
Well, there's not a lot of demand.
Yeah.
I mean, the young families that I deal with, they want two thousand square feet.
That's a small place.
Yeah.
Right.
That's significant. So retirees won't though, they're downsizing.
Would you be surprised?
Well, they're downsizing from five thousand to two thousand.
They still leave room for the families to come home.
Correct.
Right, you know.
Right. Correct.
So what are you calling a smaller home in terms of size?
Twelve to fifteen hundred square feet.
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
It's like a three bedroom apartment.
Yeah, some of the apartments that are being built on Main Street are sixteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Huge and gorgeous.
Does prevailing wage?
Not residential. There is nothing about engineering residential. And that's one of the problems. There's no prevailing wage, but when there's a lack of labor, that drives the cost up. Because these guys will steal from each other. My neighbor is an HVAC tech. Since I, and since I last five years, he's worked for three different companies. And the company he's working for now is the first company he worked for, he went back. They're just, you know, you get a better deal, you know, here and there. That, that moves, I mean, that's happening right now with building officials too. There's a lack of building officials, so they're advertising these jobs, the pay's gone way up and, and people are just like popping all over the place. They're there for six months and then they're back somewhere else.
Well, I, I also was thinking if, if, I, I didn't know if there were any situations, maybe on Main Street or wherever, where the municipality was involved and you had to pay prevailing wage, which would obviously raise labor costs. I, I didn't know if that.
It would be, any state project, you would have to play, pay prevailing wage.
Right, right, okay. So this is just all project, yeah, so.
Like some of the rural stuff, like Yale Hospital, that's been built, those were all union workers. So they're probably getting prevailing wage for most of that stuff over there. But for residential, you never see that. You never see that. That's more of a commercial activity. It has to be a large commercial activity.
Any questions or comments for Tom from the online cast? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. And now we're gonna turn it over to Megan. She's gonna tell us all about Thrive.
And I'm going to apologize to Bob because he also already heard this presentation. So you can tune me out. Give me one second if I can pull up my screen here. All right. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, as you all know, in my day job, I am also the deputy director at the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, also known as RiverCog. Now, I've given the spiel before, but I always say, if you're not familiar with RiverCog, it is the regional planning agency. It's governed by the chief elected and executive officials of our seventeen member towns, which is all of Middlesex County plus Lyme and Old Lyme. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you on the transit oriented development plan that RiverCog has been working on in partnership with the town of Old Seabrook. Let me see. All right, my, there we go. And so, as you may recall, RiverCog was selected by US DOT to participate in its Thriving Communities Program. And through that program, we were provided with a consultant team, WSP and Accelerator for America to help us create a transit oriented development or TOD vision plan in basically four parts. One for each of the Shoreline East train station areas in Clinton, Westbrook and Old Seabrook, and one for the Middletown Bus Terminal. And so in this effort, we've partnered with each of the four municipalities to make sure that we're capturing the unique priorities for each. So the goal of the planning effort is to provide a framework for creating more vibrant, connected station hub areas. And I believe I showed this concept to this group before, but you can see on the slide, it's to address the limited development capacity around the train station area, which is often due to septic constraints by encompassing three levels of transit oriented development. So the first level is the transit hubs, which are in pink. And these are the areas within that half mile radius of the train station, or what you might typically think of as TOD. The second is the local destinations, and you can see these in green. And these are places in the municipality that would benefit from greater connectivity to the train station hub. And so we knew we might, we might not be able to achieve the density that we need to support higher frequency transit in the immediate station area, given the land constraints and septic constraints. But everyone on a train is coming from someplace or going to someplace in town. So we thought that if we expanded the TOD zone to include these frequent destinations and we connected those destinations to the train through more convenient multimodal transit access, we could increase the ridership. And then lastly, because RiverCog is a regional agency, we are also looking at the regional links between the transit hubs as well as into and out of the region. And you can see those on the slide in blue. So in the TOD vision plan, each municipality is going to have its own dedicated chapter. And so I'm going to walk through the draft components of Old Seabrook's chapter as it relates to the vision. So the TOD vision framework explores land use, which is opportunity, and transportation access, which we refer to as connectivity in and around the station area. The TOD vision and concepts are the other part, and these illustrate how the framework could be realized over time through the implementation of concept projects. There are three conceptual projects that are explored for Old Seabrook. That's the Old Seabrook Shopping Center, the Old Seabrook Station Plaza, and then Main Street Intersection Improvements. And I'll go over those on the following slides. And then I'm at the end of this presentation, happy to answer questions or discuss. But also, one of the reasons I wanted to come and update in more detail today is because we are going to be doing an additional public engagement session and hoping that everyone will chew on this, take some time to think it over and come to that with additional comments as well. So the framework is divided into opportunity areas. These are broad categories that can provide guidance and direction for the town's future investment and policies. And they represent a combination of existing conditions and also future vision. Each area is going to include a list of strategies that reflect the opportunities and limitations towards creating transit oriented development. For Old Seabrook in particular, the team identified three categories of opportunity. The first is the catalytic TOD opportunity. And these are key sites that are usually large with future redevelopment opportunities that could initiate catalytic change in the area. Sites in this category are generally located on large blocks. They have buildings that are set far back from the street and they're surrounded by surface parking, typically shopping centers and non-residential parcels. And by design, the sites have limited pedestrian connectivity with the surrounding streets, the surrounding buildings and the neighborhoods. Opportunities in this category would require a bigger change, but on single parcels. And they would retrofit the current site layout into a scale of a walkable neighborhood block. The next opportunity area is the corridor retrofit. And these are smaller sites. They're typically located along arterial corridors. They currently have a sprawling sort of strip mall development pattern. And if those are redeveloped, they could transform into more walkable and mixed use form. In Old Seabrook, the opportunities that we identified were along Route One, as well as some of the perpendicular streets. And realizing opportunities in this category would be more challenging because they would require multiple adjacent sites to undergo redevelopment, as opposed to just one large parcel. Interim measures towards achieving this goal could be improving pedestrian access, safety and comfort. And then the final category is the protect and enhance opportunity. And these are walkable, mixed use and typically historic areas that are to be protected and enhanced, as the name implies. So here, existing development patterns can be built upon without undergoing any transformative change because the structure for TOD is already in place. The existing buildings tend to front the streets, the setbacks are shallow, and there's connections from the sidewalk to the front door. And as may be obvious, the Main Street area already has many of these qualities, which do already support TOD. It has a mixture of uses, it's walkable, it has street oriented architecture and it's pedestrian scaled. So this area was identified as a protect and enhance opportunity to support and build upon the existing asset. And I, as I mentioned, the framework looks at both the land use opportunity and the access connectivity. So you can see the overlap of both of those items together on the map. This one adds the arrows and the yellow circles to indicate intersections and corridors. One of the key goals for connectivity is to enhance the connection from Shoreline East Station to Main Street. Intersections for pedestrian and safety improvements were also identified, as well as streets for improved connectivity. Main Street has also been identified for pedestrian enhancements to support its position as the heart of downtown. So getting into the concept. This graphic shows the Old Seabrook Station area as it exists today. So you can see there's the station, Seabrook Station Apartments, the Old Seabrook Shopping Center, there's Main Street to orient ourselves. And here is an illustrative vision of what each of those three opportunity areas that we went through could look like when combined. So keeping in mind that this is just a conceptual vision. It's not a blueprint for any specific type of development. And it's nothing that we would necessarily see happen in the near term. But it is a vision of potential that if we like it, we could start taking steps towards making some of these things reality. So this vision illustrates a reimagined catalytic TOD opportunity, exploring how large areas of parking can strategically be reimagined. And we use the Old Seabrook Shopping Center as an example, you can see here. The placemaking at Old Seabrook Station Plaza is another opportunity to improve wayfinding and access to and from Shoreline East Station. And then Main Street and intersection enhancements could create a safer and more inviting pedestrian experience. We could foster a park once in walk environment and strengthen the connection between Shoreline East Station and Main Street. So taking a closer look at each of these, we can start with the catalytic opportunity example at the Old Seabrook Shopping Center. So due to its large size and the amount of surface parking and its proximity to the train station, this was identified as a high potential site. Recognizing that the shopping center is home to many businesses that cater to the daily needs of residents, the plan envisioned what could be possible through an incremental approach towards creating an enhanced destination and mixed use center. And it did this just by reimagining what a portion of the surface parking could look like, as well as some of the out parcels. The large surface parking lots could become a variety of housing types that complement the existing housing stock. For example, missing middle, townhomes or small apartments, they're all within walking distance of the train and Main Street. The service lots could be enhanced with greening and pedestrian walkways could make accessing the shops safer and easier, as well as making access to the station more convenient for walking and biking. A mixed use development with active and engaging ground floors on the sidewalk could create a more inviting and interesting pedestrian experience. And public spaces like a neighborhood square could add an aesthetically pleasing as well as sustainable green space to what was once paved and contribute to the vibrancy and the activity in the area. So these are just design concepts for what you could do for a shopping center plaza that we defined as a catalytic opportunity with large amounts of surface parking. So they could apply to any other catalytic opportunity site in the TOD area. The next example is the Old Seabrook Station Plaza. The recommendations here focus on connecting the area at the train station or of the train to the station building. Today, we know the area is a popular destination for residents, but it lacks usable space for pedestrians and it has confusing wayfinding for visitors. In fact, when we were doing our site walk, we ran into some visitors who were trying to find the station building and they were wandering around back and forth in front of the train, which sort of proved the point. The station plaza design is aimed to create more usable public spaces and enhance wayfinding and connectivity to and from the station and provides recommendations for a more welcoming and appealing public realm adjacent to the station. And so you can see what some of those strategies might look like. And so you can see what some of those strategies might look like here to enhance the pedestrian experience and the wayfinding. They recommend here some contrasting brick pavement along the station area here uh, to the station building, and they give some examples of what that might look like. Um, more wayfinding signage, maybe some bike share to help connect people, um, to other areas in town. Maybe some public art, a welcome plaza to give it a sense of space. A plaza area outside of the station building relocating the bike rack for better visibility. And an example of a softer, um, buffer to make the area, um, more integrated from the businesses into the plaza areas and parking. And then finally, uh, to increase connectivity between the station and Main Street, key intersections were identified for improvement, including Main Street with Boston Post Road and Elm Street with Boston Post Road. Rethinking the intersections along Main Street can also create more space for amenities, enhancing aesthetic appeal and making it safer and easier for pedestrians to cross from one side to the other. Here is an example of types of improvements that are recommended. Um, curb extensions, also known as bump outs or bulb outs, are extensions of the sidewalk installed at the crossings. This is a traffic calming treatment. It's also used to visually and physically narrow the roadway. And curb extensions can create pedestrian safety by shortening the pedestrian crossing distance between corners, sometimes nearly in half. And it makes pedestrians more visible to motorists as they approach the crossing. And because of the angled parking along Main Street, there could be a larger curb extension than what might typically be seen. And that provides a good amount of space for amenities like seating and landscaping, bike racks, street trees, uh, wayfinding signage and other streetscape items that residents and visitors might enjoy. So those are the identified opportunities and strategies that we have at this time. Like I said, these are conceptual, so they're not identified projects, but they are vision ideas that we might work towards, um, through implementation measures. And as I mentioned, we can chat about this now. Um, I'm really hoping that by showing you this today, you'll be also encouraged to participate in the upcoming public engagement, and I will make sure that the information for that is shared with this group. You can also send any comments directly to me, and we can send those directly to the consultant to get that going sooner than later.
Nice job. Question for you on the, uh, the last slide you had out there with the enhanced bump outs and stuff for the crosswalks on Main Street. I know that they're looking at redoing the crosswalks on Main Street. Do you know if any of that's been taken into consideration?
It's actually quite similar, is my understanding, to what's proposed here.
Yeah, some of the drawings that, the drafts that Carl had, the engineer put together, it looks similar stuff, like you're bringing the curbs out.
Okay.
More space there. More trees and then.
We've been definitely in conversation with Chris and Jennifer, uh, through the process of putting this together. So we're trying to sync everything up.
And there was, there's been no discussion about raising the, the crosswalk to create more of a table effect like they have in Haven.
Not in this plan, but if that's something that you think we should consider putting in there, I can definitely add that.
It's much larger, so you don't get that speed bump feel.
Okay.
But it does slow the traffic down.
Yeah.
Which is what you want to do on Main Street. You know, and it's, it's much wider.
The hard thing about Main Street though too is there's so many U-turns. Everyone's turning around.
Yes.
The raised structures in there could cause, you know, be a little more problematic, because you tend to be turning somewhere near the crosswalks, like generally speaking, right, so.
Yeah, is there any recommendation, like remove some of those U-turn? In some ways having less places to U-turn might also help make it better for pedestrians.
That's true too.
Yeah.
Well, interestingly, a lot of people U-turn to get to the side of the street where their shopping is, right? But if you're making it safer for people to cross back and forth on the street, they might be less inclined to U-turn and more inclined to park on the side of the street where they are, because it's safer.
Right. I do think we need a few more crosswalks. I know people don't want to see that, but.
I think we need better lighting or something to alert people.
Well, I think one of the concepts is the light that you press when you go across the street and then caution lights flash.
Yeah.
But also this by having the curbs come all, almost all the way out to the roadway is like people waiting to cross are much closer to where you're going to see them when you're driving, right? So that's going to help too. Right now, usually if you're waiting on the sidewalk, you could be twenty feet away from the side of the road.
Yeah, you can't even see them.
If you're not looking for them, you don't see them.
You don't see them, no.
Sometimes too, they step out from behind a car and all of a sudden.
It's just by separating, making the crosswalk farther from parking would help with that too, that you're not, you don't have these like narrow little walkways. That looks good.
Yeah.
I like the idea with the shopping center.
Question, in the shopping center, where is the Stop &amp; Shop going to be? I mean, it, I, I, yeah, obviously that's a.
Well, it stays where it is.
If they were small, do, well, I, I wasn't, I'm asking, I didn't know what.
They just need to put the entrances, some entrances to the stores in the back of the buildings for the stores that are along the front row now. Like the shoe store and Home Goods, they do have doors on the back. Yeah, this is fantastic idea. Because even on like Black Friday, you go there and like the parking lots are not full. There is space, whether there's something like this or something smaller.
Right.
Different scales or this.
And Megan, is that how, there's housing above, there's mixed use opportunities in there, so.
Yeah, so the suggestion was housing over here to relate to the neighborhoods. Um, and then mixed use on this side, commercial ground floor to relate to more of the commercial that's down this way. Um, but it's just a concept, so it could go any which way.
The only thing you're missing is a few drive-throughs.
We may also give Route One more of like a Main Street.
A direct crosswalk right to the monkey farm.
That's right. I like it.
The nice thing is this, you know, for this site in particular, you're connecting to the apartments over here. You have better station access to the back here as well.
I mean, there's so much space there.
Yeah.
That's available. And I see you identify, um, on Main Street, what I always refer to as Porter Plaza where coastline fitnesses and that. That's.
Yeah, you could do.
You could do something similar to that.
Yeah, absolutely. I, this is probably my favorite graphic, switch from here to there.
Yeah. Are you planting trees down the middle of Main Street again? I think we already took all of it down.
Yeah, that was a conversation, um, there is, where did, where did you all go? There you are. Um, there, apparently there is reticence to put up trees because trees are, um, they are an immovable object for cars. So, um, from DOT's perspective, they don't like to have immovable objects anywhere near the road because they want to give cars space to veer off the road without hitting anything. However, if it's a sidewalk and there are people on it, then the thing that they're going to hit is the person.
Right, so if there's trees, at least they have to try to move one of those movable objects. Yes, it's tough because Saybrook is, a lot of the main roads are state roads.
Yeah.
So we lose control of that.
The fun thing about this being a USDOT project, um, is that it involves several levels of government conversation and having people at USDOT gives you opportunities to talk to more people at State DOT and gives you more opportunity, for example, to talk to people at Amtrak. So, um, they were able to get several people in the room for us that may help us as we try to implement some of these things, if they are the things we want to do.
That's good. There were still senior kids, Megan.
Yeah.
They're adorable, it's fine looking. I just had a question about like with the, the USDOT and the government that involved that, is there any like risk that some of this project could just like stop with some of like the stop work orders that I've heard going around? Whereas this already, already tell you that we're safe, it's going to finish.
It was on the chopping block. It is still going. We are wrapped up by March, so we are mostly spent out on the project anyways. Um, there is a new round going and I'm not sure if that is going to continue or not.
I have a question.
This project should be fine.
Yeah, Megan, nice job on this. Um, quick question, any consideration to the parcel of land between the Monkey Farm and CVS running along North Main Street? Does that whole triangle in there with, um, Subway and the resale shop and the dry cleaners, it seems very prime property and location, you know?
Yes, so that was definitely talked about in the plan. It wasn't mocked up like the example sites, but it is identified as an opportunity site.
Guys, great, thank you.
I mean, we could put housing over the Monkey Farm. It used to be a rooming house at one point.
There's nobody living up there now?
I, oh no.
You didn't say that.
I'm not saying anything.
Um, our consultants, when they came out to do the walk, were obsessed with the Monkey Farm and they now all have Monkey Farm merch that they wear when we have our team meetings.
I guess, better we're known for that and some other things we can be known for. Any other questions for Megan? Comments? Really nice job, looks good. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All of us in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all, have a good evening.